We'll call our meeting to order. Get Councilman Wood to stand for invitation.
Oh, great to have you, Father, Lord. Once again, Lord, we commit for you, Lord, and give you thanks. Father, we thank you, Lord, for watching over us, Lord, and watching over this county of Marlboro. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to gather again, some here and some virtual, but in order to work together and continue, Lord, to plan in the county for the future. Father, we keep our hands in your hand, Lord, through this uncertain time of this pandemic. Bless all the family, Lord, and keep everybody safe from seen and unseen. With these on the blessed name of your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I want to thank everybody for coming, the ones that could not be here. For in person, thanking for by Zoom. I think we're trying to some new ways to meet and move forward as Councilman Wood said. We got Mr. Ken Strowman. He's been invited to join the meeting via Zoom. He's here just to recognize and see how we'll be conducting business. He will not be voting or taking any action during the meeting, just observing. Mr. Strowman will be representing the citizens of District Five for the remainder of the year and his election date. After being postponed several times, he's been scheduled for Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. So thank Mr. Strowman for joining us. And with that, we have approval of agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we have set the agenda as written.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All righty. Thank you. Next is approval of minutes for April 28th, 2020. Any additions or corrections?
Say a little bit, set the minutes.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. It is unanimous. Thank you. Up next, old business, ordinance 795, an ordinance to adopt the annual budget and to make appropriations for Marlboro County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, ending June 30th, 2021. Second reading. Mr. Mullen.
Mr. Chairman, you can see on the TV screen and in your handout, I put it on the screen so the people on the Zoom can see it. You can still see them on the side there, so we know they're still there. This is a, we're a little bit, we're not as far along as we normally would be with our budget due to the things going on and the uncertainty of revenue particularly. If you go to the first page there, let me see if I can figure out how to make this thing do like we were doing there. Well, I just have to amend. So, you know, as we begin in the process of the budget, the biggest thing we have to deal with is, you know, is the coronavirus. And it's throwing all kinds of monkey wrenches into what we do. There's not a lot of good numbers on revenue. There's some expenses we don't know about, so keep that in mind as we move forward with the process. We did try to go through it like we have in the past with a little chart that kind of shows you what we added and taken away. So, you know, what we're noticing is that there's no growth in revenue. Revenue's not going up. In fact, some of it's going down. And, you know, short of having to increase taxes or whatever, there is no other, you know, new sources. So, we've done everything we can not take that option. We continue to be underfunded in the local government fund from the state. There is a little bit of improvement this year, which is good, but not enough to really offset anything. This is a source of concern because if the state runs short of money, the first, one of the first places they cut is the money they give us. That could be a 2008 problem if y'all were here in 2008. But we're moving forward with the hopes that that does not happen. You know, as we said, our past budgets put a heavy burden on property tax, on property owners paying the taxes, and we've, we've worked over the last three years and work again this year to have things pay for themselves. So, a fee pays for whatever that fee is for, like solid waste, as best we can. Couple things to keep in mind, solid waste now that we're doing the roll cart service has its own fund, so it's separate than the general fund. About everything we talk about is general fund. That's the majority of our money. And now it has its own because we take money in and we pay it out for the people that are doing the service. So, there's a lot of it, you know, that just kind of in and out. There is a little bit of money that has to come from the general fund or taxes to cover running these convenience centers. It's important to note that the $10 that's in there on top of the roll car thing does not cover the cost to run the convenience centers, not close. Now, we working on ways to try to make that happen, but that's something to keep in mind. There have been amendments. Last year, we made amendments to the budget. It's the first year we try to do that really like you should. So, the numbers that I'm using as we go forward are the amended number. So, we had a couple of things that were corrections, and then when we moved all the solid waste to the, over to its own fund, I'm gonna try to use that again, to the, it's own fund, we also, we moved all those expenses out of general fund because that's where you had them when we started out, to their own fund. So, that came out of the budget. It went to a different budget. And so did the revenue that pays for it. So, you know, those are things, probably going in too much detail. What you see here is the amended budget, and y'all approved every amendment. One thing that we really want to be careful here is, first of all, to show you what it will cost to do the same thing next year without adding anything. No new programs, no nothing. No salary increases, no nothing. No cost of living. And then last, we want to make sure that we don't make bad, short-term decisions because, you know, we don't make decisions that have a negative impact long-term. We don't act foolishly and be penny wise and pound foolish. We don't want to do that. We have some good things going, and we want to keep them going. So, the first slide, this is kind of how I've done it the last few years, and this Bundy tells me that it seems to work, so I'm going off what she tells me. So, if you like it, it's my idea. If you don't like it, Miss Bundy's throwing it up. The first one is kind of where we are. So, that left-hand bar is where the amended budget is, and the right hand is the money that came in, including that separate amount that came from the reserve, the fund balance. That's what y'all approved, and that's where we are. That doesn't mean, now, you know, there is, you know, what it will actually come in at and what the money actually comes in at, we won't know till we're audited, so we go off of this. There are some mandatory changes that were made that have to be made. Employee insurance, we pay a portion of insurance for employees, just like everybody else, you know, other businesses do. That went up about 75. The state has increased the amount we pay for the retirement system to, over the last two or three years, so that was another 1%. That's about 75. These are round numbers. They may be a little less, a little more. And then there were some give and take, a little go down, a little go up of different things that came out to be about $40,000. Now, you see, you see, that kind of gives us a new starting point where our expenses are now higher than the money we had this year coming in. And so then, when we look at revenue and what we think actually might come in, or what next year we think will come in without changing anything, that went down. The revenue went down. So, you're creating a gap there that if you wanted to fill, would take 739 out of reserve. So, this year, we went 432. It would take you all the way to 739, which is not good because none of this has, takes into account any changes from the coronavirus. This is just doing business as usual. So, we've got some work to do. And before we come back to you, the biggest unknown for us is this revenue number because it has some decreases. And I'll give you a good example of the decrease so you'll understand what we're dealing with, is we had the Baldor plant in Clough. They, Rockwell and Baldor had a company down there, had very expensive equipment in there. And so, their building and that expensive equipment was tax revenue that came in for us. They closed. Now, Eris is in there. Eris is employee, and a lot of folks are doing a great job. We love them, but their equipment is not expensive equipment, not compared. So, that money went down. So, you see where we have things we can't win for losing. So, we have to be mindful of that as we move forward. We do have a couple of things that we, if we were going to add to, we would consider bringing to you all and letting you discuss, is, one is doing a cost of living for employees of 2%. That's about $135,000. The value of that is that you want to keep your salaries competitive. We're having more folks retire, you know, and we need to fill those jobs with folks that are equally competent. So, that's one thing. The other thing is that we, last year, you all approved buying or leasing vehicles for the Sheriff's Department through Enterprise was the company that got the lease. We, we think that there are some more vehicles, our public works vehicles and some others that could go on that program. The value of that is that our maintenance costs are going down. You know, we're not running cars until they're, we're not running raggedy cars. They're staying up, they're keeping up, and they also are, the company we leased from, Enterprise, controls the maintenance. They tell you when to do it and what to do. So, Mr. Carabo's looking into that. We got to look, there may actually be some savings where it really wouldn't be 50, it might be less than that. That's one of those good, long-term things that we don't want to sell short in the short term if we can help it. Now, we can, we can make it if we have to. This might be a year to make it. So, the next steps for us are to cut costs. You know, we met with the Budget and Finance Committee and talked to some of you all individually, and I think that's what you all want us to do. One thing that we will do, that we always do, is to, what I call, adjust to actual. If you have a $100 budget and you spent $70 this year to do it and you ran it pretty good, then you might not need $100 next year. Now, it's human nature that if you're doing that and it's yours, you're doing your department, you're going to add a little bit in there to cover things. And we've cut a lot of that out over the last three years, but there's always a little bit. And so, what we want to do is cut more and then reinforce to folks that, you know, if something comes up that you got to have, and you can make that case that you really have to have it, that we'll find the money through the fund balance or somewhere. But let's don't have every little pot have a little extra in it. This is the year to really tighten our belts. The other thing that we're doing now and that we want to do going forward is every time a position comes open, every time, that we think long and hard about whether we need to fill it. We want people to have what they need and the people they need to run their departments, but with technology and some of the things we've learned, as Councilman Wood said, thinking outside the box during this, as he was saying before the meeting started, we need to look at that. We certainly don't want to have a situation where we have to let folks go or furlough them like we did in '08. But if somebody leaves, that's the perfect chance to see what can be done. And that's, that's it for this stage of it, and I know y'all have, probably have questions, so we could try to answer them.
Do we know if that 117 or decrease in revenue has anything to do with the Raucow closing?
No, that would not hit yet.
It would not hit yet?
No, usually you're on at least a year lag.
Okay.
No matter what you do as far as closing, you can't, the building's there, so that can't change. The Baldor thing might be the best, good, best example for that is, if you're manufacturing, you're going to be in a fee and lieu or something arrangement. If you go off of that, then you, then you charge a 6% rate, like a warehouse. So, sometimes it may not go down as much for the building. If they start taking equipment out, as I anticipate they will, then, then that part will go down as you go. So, no, not this year, it will not take into account that. I don't know what I did to make it kill the TV. Set. I can still see them here, so I can kind of relay it for y'all. They can see you all, so.
So, right now, it's from decrease in revenue from everything that went up and all, I mean, we're looking at 739 possibly from reserve?
Yes, sir. I think that we can, I think there's some decent amount of cuts that we can make. We've identified a few of them already. We didn't put them in the budget because we want to give you that apple to apple.
Got you. Any questions?
Does it put what I've, the best guess scenario?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't know any other way to put it. We're kind of doing it with a Ouija board and a crystal ball. Yes, sir, that's, that's our best educated guess on what it would take to run this, next year with the things we can't help.
I know we've cut and cut and cut, but, I mean, I guess, go back and look and see how short we can get your pencil between now and final reading. I mean, that's, I know y'all work hard on it, but, I mean, it's, it's tough when the times we end, so we're just, so we can do.
Well, you get to the point that, you know, you'd have to eliminate a whole department or a function really save any money because it's mainly people. We don't have a lot of other expenses. You know, we made changes this year, Mr. Carabo did, where we had an employee retire, and we were able to contract out the grass mowing for certain properties we had. Well, that saves us a significant amount of money because we don't have to pay that contractor benefits and all that. And it also works a little better because we don't have to keep up with the equipment. And then if we get in a bind where we can't cut the grass, then we, when the contract's over, we don't have to continue, whereas an employee, you wouldn't want to have to.
I know in the past, with the last couple of years, we had people to retire. Is anybody thinking about retiring this year? Everybody on the board?
Maybe so, yeah. We're kind of looking at that as well. Yeah, maybe. I think, the other day, we figured out we had, this may be wrong, but like 20% of our employees are over 65. You remember me talking about, was it over 60? We got a large percentage of people that are, can see the end of the tunnel, you know. That is, you know, something to look at.
Any more questions? If not, we have a motion for ordinance 795, second reading.
So, move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Mr. Mullen, we have to keep the other two and make sure they were unanimous, so.
Yeah.
All right. It was unanimous. Thank you. Ordinance 796, ordinance to approve the capital improvement plan for Marlboro County for fiscal year 2021 through 2025, second reading.
This is a companion document for the budget, and every year, we say we're not going to do it again, but we're doing it. It's basically where we just list the equipment we have, we need to replace. And it's not like a different, it matches the budget. It's nothing different than the budget. We'll have that for the final addition, final version of the budget.
All righty. Motion for 796.
Motion, 796. Second.
We have a motion and a second for ordinance 796. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you. So, everybody hear us?
I think they can.
Okay.
They can't see this.
All right. Thank you. New business, ordinance 797, an ordinance to postpone the implementation, revised values, resorting to equalization program reassessment. Mr. Mullen.
The state allows you to put off reassessment for a year, and we've done this about every year, just because rural counties don't have the resources to get it done in the four-year time. This year, but I don't know in the years past if we did it the right way, so this is an ordinance to do that. And we'll send it to the state, and they'll give us an extra year. With our new tax assessor and some stuff he's trying to do, that extra year will be well worth it. We'll be able to be much more accurate with what we're doing.
Okay.
I make a motion, we have ordinance number 797, first reading.
Second.
So, it just, once this ordinance is ready, it's good to go, correct?
Yeah, just, it's just regular.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. All right, they got us there. Thank you. Resolution 052001, resolution authorizing submission of application by Marlboro County for airport cares grant from Federal Aviation Administration for the amount of $20,000, and authorization to accept grant if awarded. Mr. Mullen, on that.
I think there's an amended version there that includes not just the airport grant, but what's called a JAG grant, which is one that emergency preparedness and EMS can benefit from. Basically, I know no other way of saying it, but the federal government's throwing money around, and they've come up with these grants that local government can get with no match. And so, you know, we need to get them. And so, one of them is a $20,000 grant for the airport, and the other, I think, is $32,000 that Steve Akers and Calvin Cassidy with EMS are working on to get things related to being prepared for this type of event or continuing this event. So, all we're asking is your support. There is no match, and I don't know that we change it to where the resolution, if we have any other such grants come along that have no match and don't involve hiring anybody or anything like that, we'd like the ability to go ahead and sign and get the money.
Right, yeah, I see the revision here, where the grant, there is no grants required. I'll read it real quick, just for everybody to have it. It says, "A resolution authorizing submission of applications by Marlboro County for grants that may be available through the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act and the Coronavirus Emergency Supplementing Funding Program, whereas the grant funds are available for Marlboro County through Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act and the Coronavirus Emergency Supplement Funding Program on the state, local, Airborne Memorial Justice Grant." That's the JAG grant. "Whereas the grant funds, if awarded by Marlboro County, will not be utilized as a provider under the condition of grant guidelines, whereas the grant requires no match, matching funds, whereas the grant's awarded shall become effective as of date awarded." And so, and that's past this 19th day of May. So, with that, do we have a motion to accept?
I make a motion that we accept, 052001.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you. Approval renewal of detention center inmate health care service contract with Medico. Mr. Mullen.
Chairman Steen, this is the contract we have for doctors, nurses that provide medical care to inmates at the jail. It is a sort of an automatic renewal. It did have a 2% increase, well, had a 3% increase, and staff was able to negotiate down, down to 2%. That was in the contract. So, it's 156, $157,000 a year, you can see in your attachment, and it was 154. But Warden Thomas and Sheriff Lemon and finance staff here and all are okay with this and recommend that it be approved.
All right. With that, do we have a motion for approval renewal?
I make a motion for that because we haven't had any problems at the detention center about health care, and that's extremely important. Even before the virus, we haven't had any problems, and since then, we haven't. So, evidently, they're doing a pretty good job.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Now, we have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you. Next, opening and acceptance of bids, renewal of third-party billing agreement for EMS. Mr. Mullen.
You can see in your packet, there are some, there's some information about different requests, proposals that were done. We have a billing system that we have used for the past year, but we, if you remember, you all approved it on an emergency basis and also with the stipulation that it be reconsidered next year. Well, it was reconsidered, and there were two different bids made, and this is the bid that selected. There was a lot of meetings and back and forth. They not only made the right number, the numbers, Matt, were right for the selection, but the request for proposal also considered other things, and everything's going as EMS management would like for it to go, and they recommend that you renew this. There was some debate whether it's just a renewal, you know, and council didn't necessarily need to do anything, but considering y'all's investment and commitment in EMS, we felt that you should have the opportunity to approve it or consider it.
All right. With that, so we have a renewal for third-party billing agreement for EMS. Do we have a motion for that?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you. Appointments of boards and commissions. Any appointments to boards and commissions?
None that we're aware of.
All right. Finance report, Ms. Moore.
I'm going to read her report. You have, you should have a copy of the thing in the group draft there. As of the month of April, expenditures were at 70%, 6% of budgeted amount, which is still about 7% under budget for this point in the fiscal year. Revenues are in line with the same period for the prior years. Due to the, due to difficulties created by the COVID-19 crisis, we are diligently working to create a conservative budget while maintaining our services. This becomes even more challenging by the continued shortfall in state funding versus state mandated expenses. Per the Association of Counties website, the General Assembly passed a continuing resolution, which keeps state government operational in case a state budget is not passed by July 1st, and that resolution keeps things like they are this year. So, the state's just kind of passed above for now to see where it goes. Any questions I may can answer?
Any questions? Now, to the administrative report.
We always recognize employee service anniversaries over five years. This year, we have Ainsley Moore with seven years, Teresa Burgess with 18 years, Brian Oxanai with seven years, Arthur Hamer with 22, Sheriff Lemon with 13, and I think that's, that's here with this, Franklin Smith with five years, Amber Goines with five years, and Sharon Thomas with 15 years. Economic development, we actually have had some folks making queries about, you know, looking, they're looking for a place to move, which is interesting because we kind of have a, you're either all the way or one way or the other. Some folks are just kind of backholding, digging a hole and trying to hold on what they have, and other folks seem to be looking for opportunity or a way to change their business as they move forward. And one of them, we had late last week on Friday, was actually a very interesting company that had decided to look at Marlboro County based on stuff we had on the website and all that, which is always encouraging. So, we will keep moving forward with that and hopefully have some more. We are, as Councilman Woods though, trying to think outside the box. What's the economy going to be like moving forward, and what are things we have to offer? And those are things we're taking into consideration. As far as, with regards to the Delta site, which we, I hate to even bring up because it's been going so slow, our environmental engineer is working to test and remove barrels of textile chemicals that are there, and that is a big step forward. That's one of the major cleanup phases for the site. We're pleased to finally be seeing some activity after a lot of study and engineering and all that sort of thing. They'll go in and a lot of the things up there have a label on them. They just have to make sure that's what they are so the truck drivers will know when they take it off. The other thing they'll begin to work on is there are two ponds out there. You can see one from the highway, but there's another one off behind it that we will be close draining and closing, and they'll have to, we'll have to do that as well. Mr. Carabo helped me with the project of getting warehouse doors and some basic electricity on the newer part, which is that 200,000 square foot part on the southern end on Brickyard Road. This is pretty, really, really good shape and could actually be occupied. We'd like to get it to where we can at least lease it somewhere while we continue to do the rest. So, we are finally moving forward. We will eventually start cleaning the outside, you know, the cutting down trees and that sort of thing, but our engineer and environmental attorney would like to see us get those couple of environmental things done first before we start polishing it up. Under the administrative report, you'll see that our county fire coordinator, Keith Hughes, has brought a request, $100,000 request, $20,000 for each rural fire department, for them to purchase different things that they've, they brought to us. This request is clearly for different things. Different departments had different things that they want. That may be something worth some discussion when we get through here. I know Councilman Steen has some ideas on that, but I'll, if it's okay, I will finish the rest. The June council meeting was pushed back to the third Tuesday because of the primary, and that's a good thing too because that'll give us more budget time. As far as Corona, operations during the coronavirus, you know, we're continuing to operate with the clear plexiglass shields and all that. We're also trying to rotate people in and out when they can't be separate from each other, and to wear a mask if they have to get very close to each other, six feet in a vehicle or in an office. With regards to recreation and museums and those sort of things, you know, it's like schools, you know, that it's not safe for the kids to be together in a classroom, so we feel like we don't need to open those programs right now because there's no way to really do that. Our recreation director, Mr. Lowry, was telling us that some counties were talking about having baseball, but making all the, making all the parents sit in the car and extended the dugouts. Now, I don't know if y'all been to a heated Dixie youth baseball game, and I won't pick on any town, but maybe Wallace, if somebody get upset, those cars would empty out quicker than others. You know, you can't keep kids, keep parents in there, and everybody wants to. you know, you can't keep kids, keep parents in there and everybody wants to watch and, and have something to say, so. So we're going to just hold tight for now. The bad thing is that when it hopefully opens back up, we'll probably just have to say we don't have baseball. We just got to move on. And a lot of kids missed out on that, but it's not something we can control. The library began curbside pickup, uh, I guess last week, where you can call in and say what you want and they'll prepare it and drive through and get it. So they're trying to do that. But as far as opening up the actual library, you know, that we, we'll have to consider that with them a little bit more. And that's all I had for now, I can, if you have questions.
Any questions from anybody?
Um, just one, I did just a recommendation. Um, in June, on the June sixteen meeting, if the, um, the minister, if staff needs another week, we can meet on twenty-third. You know, but the last thing, because the budget is that important. You know, we'll have to meet on sixteen, we, we, but we got that. We, we need to meet when, when y'all is ready. You know, if it's the twenty-third, it'll be the twenty-third. You know, that's my opinion.
And we'll have to, we have to give a notice in the paper, I think. So we'll have to decide next week, but if anybody else has an issue, doesn't have an issue, we might take y'all up on that.
Yeah, I mean, that, that gives you a little more time between now and then. I mean, from the deficit what we have, we want to give you all the time you need to try to sharpen the pencils to get all that we can. So, yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
If we were the state, we could just say kick it down, but, but you've got to set those tax, tax mileage rates before the tax notices. So we pretty much got to do something.
Yeah. So, so if that dates are fine, either one of them, uh, like I said, we, we have a little bit of flexibility on our part for, for, for everybody also. Uh, in, uh, any more questions from anybody else? Yeah, on the, uh, the county coordinator, I mean, the hundred thousand dollars, I mean, I think county fire department's doing a good job, you know, uh, uh, just, I, I think it'd be nice if, uh, could get together and get back. I know at one time we had the ISO, the ISO study done. It's, it found out if everybody's back on. I mean, I'm in the fire service, but I mean, I, I don't get hands-on like I used to be. Uh, just, uh, but it, it would be nice to find out, you know, if we get all on track for, for huge items. I think as you said a while ago, the, uh, uh, you know, there's all kind of grant money coming available. So if we want to capitalize, if we do that as a unified body, I think it'd be a, a, a good thing. So it'd be good to try to have the, uh, I don't know if the chiefs have met or the fire, uh, board has met and, and looked over all these. So, uh, hopefully it'd be good if you can kind of arrange that and get it, you know, and keep everything moving forward. Uh, we want to move forward as, uh, as efficient as we can. Glad to hear the Delta site's coming along. Uh, so, you know, and the other good thing is that a little bit of activity, I mean, so, you know, you thought everything was dead for everywhere. So the activity's good to, to have that. So, uh, we're glad that a little bit's coming. Anything else for administrator? All right. If not, uh, Mr. Odom, you have anything?
No, everything's good. State line designs coming around here and, uh, just got to keep improving on that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Musley?
I'd just like to say everybody stay safe and, uh, I want to commend the, the county staff to, um, uh, the good job they're doing and keep the things going.
All right, Mr. Ladd?
Uh, yeah, shortly. For opening up for baseball for kids, I think it's a good idea to hold off on that. If you look at the counties around us with the numbers that they got in the virus, our numbers are low. Extremely low compared to the rest of the counties. And I think that's because people's really looking at the situation, wearing their masks, keeping the distance, keeping people in. And I, so I think we really need to keep it closed down for a while before we open up any sports, anything else, um, like that. And like, I like, uh, I like the numbers compared to other counties around us.
Well, I just echo that and I just think that we're doing good like we're doing with, uh, you know, if they're not rushing things. I mean, like I said, everybody's eager to get going and all and, you know, I, I'm one, I like to keep things going when we can. But under these circumstances, I feel like if we rush it, you know, all that we've already done will be wasted. So I think that if we just continue to do like we're doing, we'll be better off. And, uh, I just want everybody to stay safe and, you know, just take care.
The same thing, you know, with the, um, during this time, well, certainly, uh, certain things still got to do like the census and, um, you know, remember everybody to vote. And, um, you know, just with the coronavirus, you know, they got to test and now the urgent, urgent, uh, care. So you can go get free testing. So, you know, that's something that, uh, we all probably need to do, to go get tested.
Uh, last thing, I know between, I guess, last meeting, this meeting, uh, we lost one, uh, good employee virus, Mr. Ricky Gooden. Uh, like I said, we, everybody's going to miss Ricky, seeing Ricky Good, good, down-to-earth guy, give you the shirt off his back. I know Doug's going to miss him in that spot, you know, uh, so, but we, uh, we do, we do miss him. And like I said, we continue to, uh, lift and pray for everybody that has the, uh, this effect about a virus and trying to continue to move forward. I think, you know, recreation is, these kids are ready to get out, but I mean, sometimes you just have to make sure you do what's right for them. So, uh, we want to try to continue that. Uh, you know, trying to talk with this mask and your glasses not fogging up is kind of tough. So, uh, like I said, I, I, we don't have a whole lot else, so, uh, nothing else. We'll call this meeting adjourned.